Okay, so this is, it's 6:30, so this is the August 21st, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting. And our first order of business is to meet with our Police Chief Frank Avalera regarding a commendation for Eric Boulay. Frank?
The Department received information on July 19th, 2017, eight-year-old Matthew Dubois was attending the Kids Cafe sponsored by the Freetown Elementary School District held at George I. Austin Middle School approximately 12:45. Camp Counselor Eric Boulay observed Matthew walking towards his direction with his hands around his neck and a universal choking sign. Eric rushed over to Matthew, determined that Matthew was not exchanging any air. He began to lose color in his face and lips. At that point, Eric immediately placed himself behind Matthew and began performing abdominal thrusts until the obstruction was removed. It was found that Matthew had choked on some hot candy, that he had inadvertently been swallowed whole. Eric was able to provide assistance and support to Matthew until his mother arrived a short time later. As a result of this information, the Department wanted to honor Eric with a Distinguished Citizen Award for his actions to provide medical intervention to a student at Kids Cafe, undoubtedly prevented a tragic accident. Mr. Boulay is a shining example of citizens who go above and beyond to make our community a safer environment. Thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can we get a photo?
All right.
Frank?
The newspaper's here.
You guys can hug each other. Not for the photo.
Thank you, congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We always have room on the fire department, right? Call firefighter?
Yes, yes, yes. We need big strapping in people.
Great, thank you. Frank, thanks for recommending that, and I always appreciate, obviously, when people step forward and do what they need to do to help someone out. So, I'm sure that that's what your training is for, and that's the whole point. But, you know, with that said, it's certainly a great, great thing to see it work. So, thanks again. Okay, so, our next agenda item is to vote on and present a proclamation for Rena Fernald for her 100th birthday.
They're coming at 6:40.
So, we're gonna hold off on that. Thanks, everyone, for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Good seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Usually I give you candy, but you choked on something. You can still take some. You can still take some. Soft candy this time.
Monday night off, and I'm still at a selectman's meeting.
There you go.
I like you.
All right, so we did our challenge coins. I want to give one to each member of the Board of Selectmen.
My son knew it was one of them.
Wow, these are cool.
Your service to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Those are awesome.
Thank you.
As our mission statement. Yeah, as our mission statement.
Yeah, that's really cool.
Nice, thank you very much.
Get one of those signs and hang it right here.
Well, when I drive my car, I'll have it, so I can yell and scream, "Look at me, I got this badge."
That's really cool. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, thank you, Frank.
6:40.
How old are you?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Fred Parmenter we're doing too. We didn't have that in time for his retirement.
Let's do number nine while we're at it.
Nine, all right.
Kelly Conway wants to be appointed as a full member of the Agricultural Commission. We threw her off as an associate due to a clerical error. Now, we'll make a motion that we appoint her a full member.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? If that motion carries, it's unanimous.
It's always good that we're throwing people off for not attending, because then they straighten out their records, I guess.
It does.
Well, they actually throw them off.
Right, right. Um, let's do eight. Eight is appointing David Kramer, Jacqueline Kennedy, Gail Fish, and Diane Faria to the Lakeville Arts Council for a reappointment to expire on July 31, 2018.
So moved.
I'll second that, I guess.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so Agenda Item Number 10 is request to appoint Alan Edwards as full member of Council on Aging, and appoint Joanne Bowles as an alternate member of the Council on Aging.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
These, the full membership for Alan Edwards would expire on July 31, 2020, and Joanne Bowles' alternate membership would expire July 31st, 2018. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. It is 6:40. And Agenda Item Number Two is to vote on and present a proclamation to Rena Fernald for her 100th birthday. All right, the third oldest person in Lakeville.
Really?
To hell's with that. What are you gonna do?
So, you might know all this.
No, I don't.
But, but you might not, I don't know. But you're claiming plausible deniability. Just for everyone else, I've been informed that Rena has four children, 12 grandchildren, 20 great-grandchildren, and 17 great-great-grandchildren.
Some of you are right.
Is that, okay. Well, that's amazing. So, I have, I'm gonna make a motion that we, that we approve this proclamation, but I want to read it first. This is from Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts proclamation, "Whereas Rena Fernald is a citizen of Lakeville and has been a resident of Lakeville for approximately 34 years, and observed her 100th birthday on August 7, 2017, now therefore it be resolved that the selectmen in the town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim August 22nd as Rena Fernald Day in honor of Rena Fernald for reaching this distinguished age of 100 years. The selectmen do hereby request that all citizens congratulate her for her achievement. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of the town of Lakeville, this resolution be signed, sealed, and delivered on this August 21, year 2017 by the Board of Selectmen."
So now you have to celebrate tomorrow.
So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Did, do they have, I think we have the proclamation in here to sign.
Do you want to say something?
Right now?
What's your secret? Secret to living long?
Oh, I wish I knew.
Do it again?
I wish I knew.
Do you need a copy of it signed or?
Yes. Yeah, why not? It's your day tomorrow.
Well, you get it written down.
Prepared speech. That's okay.
I wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen for, I don't think you're writing.
Inviting me.
Inviting me this evening. It is an honor and a privilege. I have lived in Lakeville for 34 years, and liked what I saw here many years ago, and I still like it because it is a place called home.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Oh, nice.
I'll get your fold.
Want to turn that around for the picture?
Hold that up.
Yeah, take that.
We'll get a nice family picture outside.
Great.
Can I just hold that up?
Hold it up for him, so he can take a picture of you.
Yeah, perfect. Yep, however you like. Hold it however you like.
Wednesday?
Awesome, thank you.
That's good.
Thanks very much. Oh, they're gonna put it in a folder for you, yeah?
There's not too many of those around.
She's my grandma.
Oh, I didn't know that. Well, I know Casey. She went to school with my daughter Ricky.
She's my sister.
Casey is?
Yes.
What a small world.
We're probably all really young.
Yeah, in Lakeville, we probably are.
That's not only us, is it?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Well, that's the joke we just talked about, John.
We just talked about that earlier, before the meeting.
So, can we just go down so you can?
You can, you can escape.
Or if you want to listen to the rest of the meeting.
Yeah.
Scoot out?
Get your picture taken out front.
They're gonna take your picture out front. Yeah.
Thank you for coming, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
She's hot, if any of you guys have a father or a grandmother.
Good to see you. I will.
I saw Rachel.
Oh, you did?
Because I hear a lot at dance. Because my daughter Gianna dances.
So, you have three?
Three. Yes. Gianna's my oldest, though. She's five.
Oh, well, five, okay.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Wow, huh?
Have a good night.
Thank you, Frank.
All right, so this is for Fred.
Just delay it until he comes.
Yep.
If he comes, and then otherwise, we'll just do it later.
So, we're gonna jump to number 11. Number 11 is to accept a resignation of James Goveya for the Historical Commission. He submitted a written letter just saying, as of this date, he's residing as a board member. Do we want to advertise for a new member? I think we do.
I think.
I would agree.
In here, Fred.
Hi, Fred. Grab a seat, grab a seat, the front row.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept James Goveya's resignation from the Historical, Historical Commission.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
We'll send him a letter of thanks.
All those in favor say?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. All right, we gotta wait a few minutes still here.
Twelve's easy.
Yeah, 12 is Lakeville Arts Council. Want some signage? They're having a festival. They have it every year. Do we really need signs?
Yeah.
We sort of all know where it is. It's right at the corner there. No, so they, they're putting up some signs, or they want to put up some signs. They want to use the town sign two weeks prior to the event, which is scheduled, I think, um...
September.
And they want to have permission for, to have the sign located at precinct in Route 79. I personally don't have a problem with this, obviously. So, I move that we accept their request as requested.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Let's see here.
Minutes?
Yeah, so we have some minutes here. August 11th. Uh, everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yeah.
Did you have any changes?
Does it usually, doesn't it usually say when it ended, and when we went into?
No, then you have a separate set for the executive session.
That'll be when we went in?
Yeah.
Okay. Guess I don't read the minutes often enough. It's like, it's one page, and I thought it just ended suddenly. I'm fine.
All right. All those in favor approving the meeting minutes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I don't even know who moved that.
Me.
All right. Did you get a second on that?
Yeah, I kind of did, you.
Yeah, you just winged it anyway.
Yeah.
It's an approximation. Um, discuss scheduling of special town meeting. This is random. We're on number four. So, the timing of this is, is really for the acceptance of roads in the Cedar Pond Preserve. We want to try to get that done prior to the winter. So, November 9th was the top coat of that, of that road. So, we're thinking Monday, the 13th, assuming it's available. Does that work for everyone?
It works, but I think that's about the only item that we need to have a meeting on unless we want to start transferring money.
Oh, yeah, we definitely want to do that.
Right, because the warrant articles are pretty slim, which I'm not disappointed.
Right. There's, there's quite a few zoning changes we're putting up there, too.
Is that all?
Some of this stuff that you can see, these rezonings, and then there's some more of that, that bylaw cleanup that's going on, too.
Yeah, is that coming from ZEBRAC, like all these rezoning things?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Hopefully, the labor's contract will be...
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, we have the contracts resolved as well.
So, we're gonna start at seven. Does that mean we're gonna have a pre-meeting at 6:30? I may be...
I usually schedule you for a half an hour.
Seven's okay for me. I may be rushing in at, for the 6:30 may be tough, but...
That's fine. I mean, all we would be doing is talking about whatever.
Yeah.
Transfers or whatever else.
Whatever you told, whatever you told us at the previous meeting, we'd just be repeating it.
Okay. That should be fine with me.
Okay, so do we want to vote this now?
Well, we, I'm waiting for confirmation from the high school.
Okay.
So, I'll put it on your next meeting to officially vote it, but just to get an idea. The moderator was a little concerned about having a quorum in November that he wanted it held in October. So, I did check with town council about voting on the Cedar Pond, subject to a later date, and he recommended not doing anything contingent upon a later date. But, the residents on Cedar Pond, when they met with the planning board, they know that their road is up for acceptance, and there's 31 houses in there.
Yeah, they, they should show up.
They'll, they'll show up.
Right, they'll be formed. I appreciate Norm's insight on that, but I think that, now, like you said, there's a specific reason why we're having that meeting as late as we're having it, and it's to accommodate the needs of a pretty big neighborhood. So, I think between the, the Old Faithful that we get to a town meeting, plus 50 or 60 additional people, we should be good.
When we did Woodbridge Village and things like that.
Right.
Plenty of people came in.
Well, that was also, well...
But that's the only reason. So, maybe we should do road acceptance in big neighborhoods at the town meetings.
Yeah, really, on the, on the off...
Hopefully, we don't have too many more.
Special town meeting. Okay, so, it is 6:50. So, we now are finally at Agenda Item Number Three, and we have a proclamation for Fred Parmenter. Fred, thanks for joining us tonight. We were a little jealous that CAKO stole all the thunder at your retirement party, so we wanted to have a proclamation honoring you and your work here at the town. So, I'm gonna read that proclamation, and then we're gonna vote to accept it, and then we're gonna award that to you for thanking you for your years of service. So, this is the Town of Lakeville proclamation. Whereas Frederick Parmenter has been an employee of the Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts for the past 45 years, and whereas Frederick Parmenter began his employment with the town as a plumbing and gas inspector, and has provided the public and tradesmen with efficient and reliable service, and whereas Frederick Parmenter became the Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector for the town upon stepping down from his position as Plumbing and Gas Inspector, and whereas Frederick Parmenter has been instrumental in ensuring the safety of Lakeville's residents and businesses by providing professional inspections, and whereas upon Frederick Parmenter's retirement, his zest for life, knowledge, sense of humor in stories, as well as his friendship, will be missed by all those who have had the pleasure of working with him over the years. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the selectmen in the town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim August 21, 2017 as Frederick Parmenter Day, and the selectmen do hereby request that all citizens applaud Frederick for his many years of service to the town, and that all citizens wish him well as he moves on with the next chapter of his life. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of Lakeville, this be resolved, this resolution be signed, sealed, and delivered on this 21st day of August in the year 2017 by the Lakeville Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. It passes, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Lorraine gave you the...
Oh, oh, yeah.
Do we want to go around?
That's today.
Get a photo with Fred?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
We should get a free ice cream somewhere or something.
We're coming around to get a picture with Fred.
Sorry about my mess.
The proclamation. Here you go.
Don't you guys stand right here.
All right, just spin around.
All right.
Yeah.
Come on, come on in.
Squeezing a little bit.
Squeeze, squeeze, squeeze. There we go. I like squeezing.
I look great.
Get the right side this time.
Hold up. One more. Two more.
All right, great, thank you.
Do you need any of the proclamations at all?
Thanks, Fred.
Yes, that's you. That's the original.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Fred, here's...
Good to go, Fred.
Good to be here.
Free, quick, bud.
Fred, here's a fold.
Thank you, Fred, for coming in. Thank you. See you. Take care. You have to keep him in line.
That's a full-time job left.
That's right.
All right. Um, hmm. Agenda Item Number Five. This was a suggestion by Rich LaCamera at one of our police station building committee meetings. We have a committee member who is commuting from Boston who wants to join in on, on a call while he's traveling to the meeting, and we had the conversation about whether he could vote. And it, in fact, you can vote if the town adopts this regulation, puts forward a policy relative to it. So, I had Rita's office look into this, and we have some information on it, and a few examples of policies that towns had put together that cover the regulation. And I think that they all, they all do a good job of explaining the process. Generally speaking, it's up to the chair to determine at their sole discretion as to whether somebody qualifies for one of these exemptions to be at a meeting. So, you couldn't, I think that if we were to enact this policy, I would want to make sure that it, that we educated chairs, that we don't want people to call in from Florida. We, we want people to be at meetings, and it's under an emergency, a one-off emergency type of situation, that we would be comfortable with them allowing somebody to participate remotely. I think, generally speaking, you wouldn't necessarily do it. In, even going back to that, that example of, of the person in our police station building committee, he was listening in more just to hear the conversation and less so to participate in the meeting, which I think is a distinction.
So, can I ask, how was, was it a cellphone on the table? I mean, what do we have for, like, what was he listening in on? Was he calling in on someone's...
No, the town.
And that was enough that...
I put it on speaker. He could hear.
He could hear? Okay.
Yep. So, I don't, you know, we, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight. I wanted to bring it up. I'm glad that we have these, these examples to look at. I, I'm for this because I think that it gives boards some flexibility in attendance, and if you have a committee or a committee member that, you need, if you need a quorum, you need somebody there that they legitimately want to be a part of that meeting for the sake of making a decision to move something forward. I think that it would give all of the boards, all of our boards and commissions, a little more flexibility than not having it. I mean, I think in practice, probably nobody will even use this.
I thought you had to have a quorum before that person participates.
Yeah.
Right. Oh, did I say to get a quorum?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'll say a lot of stuff that doesn't make sense.
Well, and if I may, Aaron, when this first came out, it's been a while since 2010, but I thought that the selectmen could decide which committees could do it. But after rereading it, it's, if the Board of Selectmen voted, it's all committees. And like you said, they all have to be educated.
Yeah, I mean, I think we create a policy. I mean, there's a bunch of policies here. We either pick one and adopt it as it is, or we can augment it to fit our needs. But I think that it's pretty straightforward.
I guess I'd want to know, just maybe go back and look at the qualifications for people to be appointed to boards, because I guess my concern is possibly someone who's either a part-time resident, maybe getting appointed, which we're the appointing authority on the majority of this, of these boards and commissions anyways. But should we have somebody who doesn't actually physically live here, and they're participating because they're allowed to participate in this role? I, I just want to consider those concepts, too. I mean, that might be fine, you know, if somebody lives here, as you said, in Florida, half the year.
No, no, that's not acceptable, is my point.
So, I think that then, you know...
Well, I shouldn't say that.
Because it says geographic distance is one of the, under the CMAR.
But again, I think it's, it would be like an emergency set of circumstances. It wouldn't be, they're in Florida, six months out of the year, and they call in for their, their meeting every month, or whenever.
But I don't think you can, from what I read, you can't pick and choose like that because of geographic distance being one of the reasons for it.
One could say you're in Boston, one could say you're in north of Boston versus Florida. But what I don't like is, we've addressed it in the past, I don't, I don't like the concept of not going to a meeting, and if someone can't make a meeting and you have a, you have a quorum, because you can continue with the meeting. If, if someone wants to listen in on the phone, I don't object to that, because when you start to do selectmen's meetings as we move forward, they'll be live anyways. I mean, you can, they can Skype them. I mean, you can, they can Skype them to wherever the person is. But certainly, I agree with most of them, except the geographic distance. Not that we couldn't modify it. Personal illness, personal disability, emergency, military service. You know, if someone's in the hospital, if one of us is in the hospital, and you wanna have a vote of three selectmen, and though you only need a two vote, you know, you might make an exception, but most people can have the quorum anyways. I don't like the idea. I think it's a step to be misused rather than to be helpful. I just see it being misused more than it would help. And it hasn't been an issue before. And if someone is coming from Boston, because that's where they work, then they simply don't come to the meeting. I don't object to them not coming to the meeting.
Yeah, I guess...
Just my general feeling is that I think it, we have so many committees that I think it would be abused long-term.
Well, I almost wonder if, you know, if you wanted to try it, because you can revoke it by the same body that has enacted it, by having, giving actual duties and responsibilities to the chairman that come from the Board of Selectmen with regard to taking attendance. I almost feel like it would have to come out with, as, you know, Aaron, as you're saying, education, but almost a required checkup with the board chairs to ensure that they're taking attendance properly, because clearly we've had multiple instances that just happened where that wasn't happening. You know, that minutes are being done and voted on, and they're approved consistently.
I'm sorry I even brought this up. You didn't.
I guess...
I did. No, and I say that because, you know what, I don't even care if this happens, honestly.
I mean, I don't think it's a...
I've already put way more thought into this than I would want to. And who's gonna educate all of these chairs? I don't wanna do it, so...
It's like, bring your own alcohol, that policy that we didn't wanna enforce?
Yeah. Well, really, it's like, do we really need a harbor master? Right?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, because, I mean, in a board of three, certainly, if people can't make it, you can't make it.
Really, like, you guys have both raised, I'm joking with all of that, but you guys have both raised some legitimate concerns for us to not move forward with it. And I don't think that, you know, I don't have any arguments as to why I am for it. I mean, I brought it up for the sake of conversation. If the two of you have some reservations about it, then let's just move on. I'm okay with that. With that said, let's discuss the highway facility phasing plan.
Here we go.
Well, can I, can I, I know you don't wanna belabor this, can I just add one more point back to five?
Sure.
I do think, though, it would be helpful to let people know, if you do have the telephone, that you can call in to be able to listen. You're not voting, but at least to be able to hear a conversation in the event that, you know, you kind of allow it to happen anyways, but we don't really...
Do you wanna do that? Do you wanna, um...
If you, I bet the other party would object to not being able to speak, because then, if we allowed five people to do it, if you were sick and you're in hospital, I'd love to, you'll have your computer there. We can Skype you in, you can almost be a member of it.
Yeah, no, got it.
I know.
Never mind.
I can't see anyone who won't wanna pipe in.
To say something, right? Okay. Right.
No, I get it. I get it. We're trying to, we're trying to help people that can't come to a meeting, but that's why we have lots of people in committees.
Yeah.
Business happens, town business happens at town hall. It's really that simple.
Yep.
All right, number six. Discuss the highway facility phasing plan. Dear Mr. Burke. We received a letter from Jeremy Peck outlining his phasing plan for a proposed highway facility. The plan is subject to change. That's good, 'cause once we get a hold of it... No, seriously. So I thought this was great. I thought this was worthy of a conversation here at the board level to talk about what our expectations are relative to the scope of this. Now, I thought he's got, some of these projects on here are things we've talked about. So he's identified the need to clear the surveyed property line, which is something I know you wanna see happen. He's got this fuel pump thing in here where we know that that's an issue that we're gonna have to deal with one way or the other. The new highway office, which funding is in place, you know, that's obviously something that gave him the money two fiscal years ago, so we're excited to see that happen. Then we have this other stuff that is projected out through the next two or three years, up through the salt shed. And then we have the long-term stuff, which is a good ten or eleven or twelve years out, which anticipates the idea of an entirely new highway facility, which, you know, that day will come. Whether it's ten years from now or not remains to be seen, but at some point, the town will need to invest in a new highway facility. So this is, obviously, it's very general in scope, but I'm glad that he provided it, and I thought that it was worth sharing to the two of you to kinda see what your thoughts were on it.
Oh, I think it's a start in the right direction, but, you know, one is, one is things other than cleaning up the site. I was only after cleaning up the site. And certainly, in ten, which is out to August two thousand and twenty-nine, I guess, any clearing, stumping necessary would be completed two months prior to start of work and would be limited to only necessary clearing. I mean, one says he's not really interested in cleaning up the property point-to-point, unlike what Nate and I had suggested. But clearing the survey line, walking it, then we can develop an action plan. The whole point was to find holes in areas and grades that we could use the material on without trucking it off-site. That was really the premise behind this. And it's not to offend neighbors, that is, if you do a berm that's ten feet high, flattened out with arborvitae and white pines, it would certainly block the noise. So this really doesn't go enough to clearing up the property. But clearing the survey line to a six-foot swath at least allows us to walk the property and decide, if there's a big hole, you're only gonna clear to there to dump the material. And the whole point is to make erithans jammed in there. It will be, where are we gonna put the bins? Need funding. I don't know that there's a lot of funding involved in this stuff. I mean, it's like a thousand dollars probably to pour a little pad and put some cement blocks around. But it's a step in the right direction. So I call it a step in the right direction. But I don't wanna mix fixing the fuel pump along with clearing the property.
Do you wanna get some idea of the actual cost? I mean, the fuel pump piece, was that ten grand, fifteen grand, something like that?
Crazy money.
But to get those dollar figures, that would be in this fiscal year, at least for a conversation piece for the fall town meeting? Is that something that we wanna do, and you wanna move forward on this? Because there are items, you know, we can determine whether or not you wanna fund them?
I don't know what...
It's really just two that are in this fiscal year.
I don't know about what, dispose of material. I'm hoping that it can be consumed on the property itself, and time will tell. Once we clear, once we do number one, we can see if we can, you know, that's one that says need funding. I'm hoping that we're not gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars moving material.
Right.
So if you do one, then we find out if seven, if we need to dispose of any off-site material.
And we could always just add it, too, if we do find out what it is, onto the transfers at the special.
Right. And there's nothing else other than install bins, which I thought was just, you know, you've seen those cement barriers that they put around the bins, you dump the material in there, and you process it and send out the ones that you need to send out.
Yep.
Hopefully, we'll consume the other material.
Okay.
There.
Yep.
But if you don't, trust me, if you don't clear an area large enough, you're gonna be moving that material around the rest of your life. You have to move it to be a greater area, because you can't use it according to Nate. That's not material that's gonna pack, and you're not gonna pour a foundation on top of it. You're not gonna do that. It's not the right material for that. So anyway, this is a step in the right direction.
Okay.
Let's see what happens.
Okay, so, hang on a second here. All right, that's it. Number seven. Review comments from town council regarding earth removal bylaw. Patricia had coordinated getting our current bylaw to our town council for a rewrite, and he promptly, promptly, I don't know when it's dated, April twenty-seventh.
That's how long ago we asked, and your agendas were just really busy, so I kept putting it off before the board.
He gave this back to us in April?
Yep. That was even before the marathon town meeting.
Yep.
But I think he's not gonna be our town council anymore.
So, listen, this is, this is something that I wanna see on our November town meeting. So my answer to all of these is, one, yes, let's do number three. Yes, 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 yes. So, wake up. Wanna work at the town hall? You gotta, you gotta have full energy all day. You can't be yawning back there. Lorraine's yawning in the middle of the meeting, even worse, in the middle of me speaking.
Ooh.
I'm already yawning myself. So my thought was, yeah, like, they, Greg knows, has seen a million of these. He knows what these should be. I know it's his job to ask these questions, but my answer to all these is yes.
Well, Mr. Chair, in item number one, he's asking the board to decide what type of fee you wanna go with. We need to tell them.
Number three. Yep, I said three on that one.
Yeah, I don't, eight cents per cubic yard, effective two months before I was born. That's our current fee structure.
I think it went to fifteen. Ooh, fifteen.
No, they raised it.
Oh, they went up? Oh, look at that.
They raised it the year I graduated from high school.
Have an administrative fee of two hundred dollars an acre.
They did look at it since then, but opted not to increase it.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be comparable to what the market is, whatever that is.
Twenty-eight years ago.
And that's something that Greg could help us with.
Yep.
Different towns, I mean, it's all over the place. Midamar charges a quarterly fee. It's just a flat quarterly fee, and they pay it four times a year. There are other people that just charge by the yard. There are other people that charge by the acre, just the acre. So it's all over the place. There's really no consistent answer. I, number three, consultant fees. How does the board feel about that? We don't, we, we don't get as-built. When a project is done, we just don't get as-built. I ask and ask and ask, and they never do it.
I say yes, and I say, too bad, you're gonna get an as-built.
My recommendation to get an as-built is that we assess an engineer's fee right up front when the project starts.
Yes, do it.
We hold it in escrow, and then when they submit their as-built, then we can release the...
I actually want that on the planning board, too. I wanted to have that conversation with the planning board for the, what, peer review services, so that they're paying for an engineering company to come out, which most other towns do as well.
I think they already have that in there, rules and regs.
But they don't do it.
Not all the time, no.
Ever? Okay. Anyways...
Planning board is the planning board, Mitzi. It's just like the school committee. You can try to twist their arm, but they're not beholden to the Board of Selectmen.
Until it becomes our problem.
It's never our problem.
Kinda, well, you're right. Woodland Ridge was not, we just ended up listening to the problem.
You ended up solving that problem, but that wasn't our problem to solve, although the people of Woodland, the good people of Woodland Ridge, I'm sure appreciate it. But, you know, what can you do? You can't, you know, you can only save so many baby kittens, right?
Is the answer to this question, you want him to address all of these items?
Yes, so, well, this is just my opinion, and I obviously wanna hear from John and Mitzi. My answer on one was yes, let's do number three. Yes, let's increase the fee. Yes, let's charge consultant fees. Yes, let's address the stockpiling issue. Yes, let's put some teeth in enforcement. Yes, let's reword it, because it is so poorly written, that's why I said, let's have town council do it.
I didn't even understand until I saw this on the agenda, that that was the ongoing, you know, earth removal, right? Wasn't that what was on the priority list? Oh, no, what's that, what's that other thing?
No, it's the earth removal bylaw.
That's what it was, right? That was on there every time we looked at it and go, what is that? I don't even know what that is.
It's been on since the audit was done in two thousand.
But there are only...
The town council has said our bylaw.
There are only a few permits, that is, I don't think there's anyone that's actively, actively hauling material. I think we gave out three, and I don't know that they're actively, you can give T.L. Edwards one, but he's not actively hauling material out of there. That is, it's just a stockpile. So we're writing a bylaw for potential future use, because no one really is hauling, I don't think anyone's hauling material out. And the stockpiling under four, you could say that could have been the buttless, but there's plenty of stockpiles in the town. They fall under agriculture for the most part, and they're usually regulated by the agriculture and by the state structures, not necessarily the town. They're not really hauling it out. They're making, they're making room.
New England rental is stockpiling. There are a lot of places that are stockpiling that we should be clear.
No, they are, but they're not really earth removal. That is, they're stockpiling. That's a, they're using a business for a non, a business that wasn't supposed to be there. But an earth removal permit doesn't solve the rental place.
But stockpiling is part of our earth removal.
Stockpiling, you get into the nightmare of the agricultural use. I don't care. You can go to several farms in town that make the piles gigantic, not little composting piles, big composting. It's allowed under agricultural business to do that kind of stuff. If you wanna, if we're writing this to enforce a stockpiling problem, then this isn't, this isn't, this isn't the vehicle to do that.
I think what Greg is saying is that it's earth materials that are brought from, to the property from other sites. So it's, it's an earth removal operation that is maybe pulling out sand and bringing it to another site just to store it, which is different than New England rental, which is bringing in stuff to sell at retail.
Right.
So I think it's a, there's a distinction.
Most people started out with earth removal bylaws because they didn't wanna end up with a fifty-acre site stripped of all the valuable loom and erithan, and you end up either with a rock pile, and people just say, see you later. And so I'm not too sure what we are trying to resolve here by changing an earth removal bylaw, because we don't have... have any earth removal going on in town, nor have we had it going on in town for years.
Well, not that, not that long ago, we had Gene Bartlett, we had Cranberry Boggs going on.
Years, years. Gene Bartlett's property was ten years ago.
But there's still, there's still a lot of land in town where someone could decide they want an earth removal.
Oh, absolutely. I think that this is forward-looking, and I think it's, it's the time to do it is when nobody's really doing it.
Yep.
Because then you don't have people complaining. Right. But I wanna make sure, I don't object to the earth removal bylaw, but if we have other issues, stockpiling offending neighbors and things like that, those are different issues.
Yep, and.
Not to be resolved by this, I don't think.
But earth removal.
This is specific to, to earth materials brought to a property from other sites in relation to earth removal. You know, it's not like they're, they're buying something at wholesale and selling it at retail. Right. You know, I think it's specific to the operation.
We have that issue that's, did we ever get a resolution on it with regard to?
Piles?
Yeah.
There are one-way straights, there are one-way straight of just hauling out, then not bringing anything in.
Reducing the piles in total.
Right, they're just reducing the piles.
Mr. Chair, we, we did have a gentleman come in and he did ask for an application for an earth removal project. He didn't tell me where or what, but he came in probably around a month ago. So, we may have a new earth removal project starting up at some point. And, and a lot of it is, I think Greg wants to clear up a lot, like, there is one line that talks about loom can't be removed from Lakeville. Well, when somebody clears a property and they're digging out, like, the fields, you know, you have a lot of loom left, and it, you know, so he's like, well, one place it says it can't be removed, one place it says you can remove it. So, I think he wants to try to clean it up a little bit as well.
Right, well, my, my thinking was way back, probably before April twenty-seventh, was just work with Greg and present us with a bylaw.
Right.
Okay.
So, if you're looking for guidance on this, yeah, like, explore all of these things with him and see what, see what you get. I mean, you, you're the one that has implemented it from, from an administrative perspective for the town, so you're best suited to, you have the most perspective on all of this, Ozley.
It's been a little unwieldy to, to use, especially the fee collection, because I'm not an engineer and I can't tell you if the amount they're reporting is right, or, you know, so that's been a little unwieldy.
Right. But if, if they have to pay somebody to go out and do a survey to verify what there is to, to qualify the fee, then, then that's on them. Or, maybe you just do a flat fee. I mean, whatever you think is easiest.
Perhaps we could come up with a pricing structure for this to this many yards, this to this, you know, and throw in an engineering component.
And during the hearing, the board definitely has all the neighbors coming, you know, those are pretty big hearings, because they're, you can regulate the hours of operation.
Oh, yeah, no, I, those are big deals when, when you have a serious earth removal project going on, but, but, you know, it's like John said, we haven't seen that in years, but that's why we wanna do this. And just, you know, work with Greg on, on exploring these things and, and come up with one that you feel fits the town, and then we'll talk about, you know, whether we think that there's an angle that maybe was missed, or whether it suits the needs, but. Right. So, I mean, the whole. I just wanna get it done.
I do, too.
Right, the whole purpose behind earth removal is to protect the town's assets, that is, they can't strip property, send it to Westwood, and you end up with a. Right. Valueless piece of property. But all the other issues of, of loom removal and loom sales and, and stockpiling, the things that are somewhat nuisance to the adjoining neighbors, that's almost not part of an earth removal.
We, we had, we had, because of the bylaw, one of the developers wanted to move loom from one subdivision he was doing over to Woods Edge, and our bylaw wouldn't let him just move loom within town. You know, it's all of those little.
You should be able to move it within your town. And then, and then there should be some vehicle that allows them to, to object and mitigate it, too. I mean, if he has a development going on in Middleborough versus Lakeville, and he has, you know, a hundred thousand yards of loom in his property, he wants to move it, I suppose you should ask permission, because you're trying to get an as-built and find out what you're getting left with.
Yep.
That is, I had Waste Management, I'll give you an example, Waste Management came to me, they wanna excavate thirty acres down ten feet. I'd end up with a thirty-acre pond. What the hell am I gonna do with that? So, they wanted it to cap landfills, you know, so you wanna prevent some of that, I think, from going on, because then you end up with a bunch of ponds that serve no purpose at all, and they've stripped all the assets out. But the, I agree that now's the time to do it, but we wanna allow builders to be able to move material to other places. And stockpiling, which is usually the nuisance of mixing manure, shaving sand, that isn't really earth removal, it's usually composting that's covered by other regulations. Those are the ones you may wanna look at.
We don't have a composting regulation, do we?
Probably not, and that's, that's the one that.
Is that an agricultural commission thing that we should charge them?
That's the one that really, that's the one that aggravates people.
D E P, actually.
Yeah.
Does that?
With, that came up with.
Right. It's even far beyond that. The farmers get away with it, rightfully so, because they're trying to compost, use their smelly manures to do something else with it, make some money out of it.
And one thing, too, where this is a general bylaw, you're not required to have the advertised public hearings, but in the past, on different general bylaws, the selectmen have thought, well, we'll just hold a regular hearing if anybody has any questions. So, I don't know, once this comes down, if you wanna, but you don't have to.
No, trust, trust me, we have nothing going on. It's kinda preventive maintenance for the future. Yeah, when, when we get something we can work with. Yep. For consideration for town meeting, we'll do a public hearing. Yeah. Prior to the town meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't, regional fincom on.
Yeah, it's kinda afterwards, so I'm trying to line up a CDC meeting.
Any new business?
I can give a brief update on regional fincom.
Okay.
So.
Sorry I asked.
I'll do a quick one. We met, we are going to meet once a month.
Sorry I asked.
It's the plan. It was, as to be expected, a somewhat, I won't say unproductive meeting, but a meeting in which we are kind of trying to establish really where that committee is going, because we run into the issue of having contract negotiations, which will determine the largest component of the entire budget, and what's the correlation between the contract negotiations and the regional fincom, and how can we even have a conversation about that, if possible, because we can't go into executive session, because we just, I guess, can't as that group, from what I understand. Maybe we can, but what good does that do? We can't participate in the contract negotiations, so we're not negotiating a contract, so it's not really a reason for us to go into contract negotiations in executive session. So, there's just gonna be a lot of trying to figure out.
That's a poor interpretation of, of, of the open meeting bylaw. If you are, are charged with giving an opinion relative to the financial, financial aspect of the school budget, like the contracts, you absolutely could go into executive session under contract negotiation to discuss that.
But I think the problem is trying to then get that recommendation to that committee.
Why, they just would then get that in executive session themselves. They would enter into executive session to hear your, your subcommittee's opinion on, on the contract negotiation. And that's, that's pretty, pretty easy to do.
Okay. Yeah, we kinda got hung up on that. I said, well, maybe we should talk to town council, 'cause I don't know, you know, whether or not we could even do that. But, yeah, we, we'll see where it goes, because we're, you know, we all know that we're in a very bad position. They declared that their E and D will likely be between a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand dollars certified this year, which means they can't even sustain their own contribution to the operating budget that they put in last year, which is three hundred thousand dollars. So, there's certainly some large issues with the school budget, which we knew we'd have going into this year anyways, because there's about four hundred fifty thousand dollars of non-recurring, one-time, well, really more than that, revenue, taken from stabilization funds that funded their operating budget. They're going into contract negotiations, and I had suggested that the only thing that would be good that would come out of them would be a cut to the total costs that would be coming from the contract in order to maintain a sustainable budget. So, they have somewhat charged the regional fincom with solving that problem, so we'll see how that goes.
I, I guess I'd have to go back and, you're more familiar with me of reading the charge of the regional finance committee, it was to try to help.
Make a budget recommendation.
Budget recommendations, and now, I'm not so sure that the regional fincom has made budget recommendations to the school committee on an annual basis.
We did.
And, and that they don't pay any attention to them.
Well, yeah, I.
And so, maybe you're, you're what I call the whipping boys of the school committee, and I'm not so sure that it serves a purpose other than trying to support only their, their agendas. I don't know what, if, if they don't pay attention to what the regional fincom suggests, then why bother? And furthermore, if they've charged you, your subcommittee with solving their problem, but don't even allow you to discuss it at the meetings for fear of violating an open meeting law, it's, it's a farce. It's, it's an absolute farce. If, if the fincom, this isn't to bash the fincom that you're on, but if the fincom can only deal with fifteen percent of the budget, which is the non-contractual part, remember, they write the contracts, because if salaries and the health benefits comprise eighty-five percent, that's all that should really be being discussed. I mean, you can discuss the budgets about student enrollment, class size, teacher, number of teachers, whatever. I, I'm not too sure, because you, you're so astute at the numbers that one says, wow, what are we really doing here?
Yeah.
And we hear that from you.
Oh, yeah.
You certainly hear it from us.
I, I said that multiple times at that meeting, I'm like, I don't really know what the purpose is. We're not supposed to be dictating policy, but yet you want us to think about ways that we can change policies through financial means to.
Who's driving that committee? Who's chairing that committee?
Steve Owen is now leading it. We have not officially, we never voted on a chair, we never voted on any of that either, but.
And that's fine, but somebody should be a chair, and somebody with that chair should read that mission statement before every meeting and say, this is our focus, this is what we're trying to do.
Right. I mean, specifically, it states that the purpose, regional finance subcommittee shall serve as an independent advisory subcommittee to the regional school committee on matters of finance and budget, which, you know, it says the regional finance subcommittee shall, prior to the vote on the annual budget by the school committee, present its recommendation to the committee. Again, it's a recommendation. I mean, I think, though, John, the one other thing, though, is you're saying, if we only have the ability to manipulate fifteen percent of the budget, without, I guess, without considering the contract negotiations, we do have the ability to, I suppose, make recommendations on the rest of the budget, which is, you know, all of that without any increases. You know, and that being said, all I can think of is, the only recommendation that I could ever support from a sustainability standpoint is, is a cut to the budget of probably two million dollars, which is where the start of it should have been last year, in my opinion, because now it's an even bigger cut with a bigger issue of how to deal with that. That being said, we'll see where this goes.
Right. No, I, I like your, I mean, you, you're there, you know the numbers, and do your recommendations, and see where it go, like you said, see where, see where the meetings go.
Yeah.
Okay, any old business? Just in the. So that pause and I change the subject. Just, no, just, just in the read file.
That was done. There's nothing really more to say.
No, just the, the, the D E P talking about that the permits won't be needed for a long time, just to bring that out once again, that much to my surprise, that Lakeville being a pond complex, as I call it, one would think that the stormwater management would have a great effect on us, but most of the stormwater discharge that goes into, we'll call it Assawampson, is all off state roads. And everything that goes into the pond by the homes, if you will, are all on private property. We, we haven't accepted any of the roads, so that there's so little of this. So, I caution you, don't, I don't wanna make it a mountain out of a molehill. We can't discharge water into the state road here, which goes into Assawampson. But we talked about wash basins for fire trucks and things like that, need to be up the highway bond. You could just put one right here in the driveway. It doesn't go anywhere. That's how most of them go in, they just go into a five-hundred gallon closed system. This isn't as big a deal as I thought, because the state said they're not gonna do any of it. So, there you go. This is the state law, and they're saying, we're not gonna want to. Right, they don't have the money to implement it now, either. Right. So, don't spend a lot of money implementing something that isn't significant in the town. Knowing where all the stormwater discharges are and things, you have to do.
But the EPA has, I know one small town near us has already been fined, and they're big fines for not doing.
But that was under the old permit.
Maybe they're fined for a specific problem that they did. What was the town?
East Bridgewater. I'm not su, East Bridgewater had it. Well, I know they had, like, illegal discharge or something, or illicit discharge, but I think what, one of the big things that I remember was they were washing their fire trucks, like, on, like, the front of town hall, and having all the water drain into, you know.
Right, you can't, right, you can't, you can't do that.
They didn't have the correct drain.
But that's the only thing you can do, but you could solve that pretty inexpensively.
Yeah, but.
Right.
I mean, I'm not overly concerned.
No, okay. So, I, I did read this letter and.
Yep. I, I do wanna just make sure that with the community compact letter that came out, too, I mean, we've got grant opportunities available. I don't see why we wouldn't, you know, start looking at that. We've got one grant application for the efficiency and regionalization grants. They open on October sixteenth, they close on November sixteenth. And then the I.T. grant that we did last year and got the forty thousand dollars for opens in January. So, we have the entire strategic plan for I.T. That one's extremely simple to just cut and paste, that we should make sure that we're prioritizing that. So, I just don't wanna lose those dates.
And Free Town, one of the selectmen had called, if we were interested in doing anything regionally with Free Town.
Oh, perfect, for the school district, 'cause we can, that's one of the, I don't know what that could be.
Budget workshops?
Yeah.
Union contract negotiations?
Training.
Will we get a grant for that?
Maybe. Maybe we can.
Okay.
So, I'll call, it's Charlie, is it Lincoln?
Oh, the new town?
Yeah, he's the one that called.
Sullivan.
Sullivan, I always say Lincoln.
Oh, he's the new selectman. Have they picked a new town administrator? That they almost got funded, like, twenty thousand dollars for? That was great.
Turned all that down, right.
Yeah.
I just have some old business, just to follow up, the selectmen had wanted me to get in writing from attorney Jim Fox that he didn't need the easement for the Nook Street property. I have that in writing. And we checked in with Brian Madden at L E C on trying to get Ted Williams remapped in changing the map. I'm not sure if I forwarded this to you, but they wouldn't change the map. So, we forwarded him the newer information, and he's going to schedule a meeting with Natural Heritage to come out to the property for the location of the police station.
Okay. Any other business? Have any other business? All right, we're gonna jump into executives, executive session briefly, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A, Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bar.
to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically, the laborers' union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, and the chair so declares, and pursuant to MGLC thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with the open meeting law, MGL thirty, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F, approval of executive meeting minutes for July thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, and August eleventh, two thousand seventeen, and the chair so declares not to come back. Once we have entered, we will stay there indefinitely. That's my motion.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
That guy?
Nope, correct guy.
Probably aye.
The ayes have it.